Love, Support, and Hard Work. Homeboy Industries recently celebrated a strategy that has proven successful over the last 30 years.
It's a very special evening here at the Central Library in downtown Los Angeles. We are launching a very, very special exhibit called Radical Kinship. And it celebrates 30 years of the great work of Homeboy Industries. We're really excited about this exhibit. It's an important story, and it's an important LA story. And there are really some powerful images in the gallery. So we hope many more will come in the coming weeks and months. Anytime one can listen to Father Greg talk about the mission and the goals and the accomplishments of Homeboy Industries, it's always a powerful time.
I'm in all the detention facilities where I say mass, I hand out my card. I always say, no matter how many in the crowd, when you get out, there's my cellphone number, call me, I'll tell you to come in, you'll start work the next day.
I am the photographer at Homeboy Industries. I grew up in Boyle Heights. I think I was in the first or second grade when I witnessed the first murder. We were playing kickball in the elementary school and a homie's running, he's being chased, he gets corralled, he gets beat to death. The common thread I have with a lot of homies there, a lot of homies have. We should have died a long time ago in so many different ways, but for some reason we're not dead, we're still alive. And there must be a reason for that. And for me, this is my reason, this is to do what I do here.
My inspiration comes from the homies, you know, that they won't ever come when I have more courage, or I am more noble, or I'm closer to God than they are. And so I get life from knowing them and walking with them.
The stories that this exhibit tells through images and words will hopefully impact many, many people and share with people this incredible history that is Homeboy Industries. Come on down to Central Library, enjoy the exhibit and all the other great things our libraries have to offer.
Talk about girl power! A female-run pro wrestling promotionist putting the glam in body slam and playing it up for laughs.
I'm a big fan of burlesque, and he's a big fan of wrestling. And so he came in to me one day and said, "Oh my god, there's wrestling and burlesque."
And that is what they're standing in line for outside of the Mayan Theater in downtown Los Angeles on night of backdrops, body slams, and burlesque. In other words, lucha vavoom. We head backstage from Hill Street to ask co-owner and performer Rita DeAlbert. Why are people so into this?
Physical comedy has been with us forever, from Greek times, you know, through, all the way through to silent films and music hall, and it always works. This translates to everybody, whatever age you are, whatever culture you come from.
With an emphasis on acrobatics, traditional lucha libre, or Mexican pro wrestling, really took off in the 1940s with the first masked Mexican megastar, El Santo. El Santo wasn't just a wrestler or luchador, he was a movie icon, a folk hero who lived and breathed the part in and out of the ring. Other masked superheroes of the squared circle would follow.
They embody this character in the mask, they're never seen without it. I love that whole mystery, and it's something that's really missing in American culture. We don't have an equal. You know, it'd be like if whoever plays Spider-Man these days just was always in that mask, and you never knew what actor it was, and they didn't care, like, they were happy to be known as Spider-Man.
Add some comedy, add a little of this, and you get lucha vavoom, wowing crowds in Los Angeles since 2003.
It is a mixture of sex and violence, but it's sort of in a cartoony sort of way, so it's not raunchy, it's like, but it's really like, can I say badass? It's badass.
So I am actually the reigning champ currently. I've been wrestling for these guys for a few years now, and my character is definitely a little more sexy. I attack people with my own ass, so people always enjoy that. Weird, huh?
All comedy aside, these are highly-trained performers with years of experience under their championship belts. Many of them have worked for World Wrestling Entertainment and other sports entertainment promotions.
They bring people from Arena Mexico, from AAA, from Japan, from everywhere. Like, I was part of WWE too. There's some ex-WWE that are gonna wrestle tonight too. I mean, lucha vavoom tries to give the people the best they can.
We've been all over the United States, we've been in Japan, we've been all over Australia. There's times we're coming back and we're just sore, tired, but that's what this is about. We love doing what we do.
I feel like our show should be the WWE. We're so much more fun. I want them to work for me, I don't want to work for them. It's really the best job a person could ask for.
Lucha vavoom rumbles back to downtown LA around Valentine's Day. Learn more at luchavoom.com. Paint was flying all over the place in downtown LA as artists battled it out for the top spot in a national championship. Here's a look.
We're here at the Art Battle Los Angeles City Finals. It's the culmination of the series here of the Art Battle events, live competitive painting, the best of the best. In three rounds, we're gonna determine who is this year's 2018 LA Art Battle City Champion. It's a great time, and people are out here experiencing art. It's so unusual to have a visceral experience with art. I mean, of course, the best of the best really makes you feel something, but here, you're inside the creative process of not just one artist at a time, but eight artists at a time. And it's a fantastic experience, and it bridges boundaries, and it exposes people in a way that they have not been before, unless they've been to Art Battle, of course.
This gives a lot of painters and artists exposure to each other, but also to the community, and it also brings the community in, and they can see art created, which is something that most people don't get to see.
No, I love it because of what it does for the artists. To see an artist win or to see an artist lose, it's just, it's so emotionally meaningful in a way that in many of our experiences in life that they aren't. It's so punctuated, it's so direct, you know?
I'm not one for the spotlight, so this gives me a bit of a rush and a change from being at home in the studio.
LA is the perfect city for it. It's a vibrant, diverse crowd, they care about art, they care about art in a performative way, they're very supportive, they, it's a fantastic crowd, and we're thrilled to bring the national championships here.
I think this event is an incredibly fun thing, and if you've never been, you should definitely come.
The Art Battle Championship will be held in downtown LA November 28th with even more live painting. Los Angeles is on the cutting edge of the healthy local food trend. Food Day LA is just one of 8,000 such events that happen around the country.
LA is fast making a name as the good food capital of the country. City leaders held the eighth annual LA Food Day, a combination of farmer's market and outdoor workshop on all things related to the so-called good food economy, one that produces healthy, affordable, and sustainable food.
This is, I would say, three times, four times larger than what we had last year. And it is my honor to encourage everyone to try the food, learn about all the different healthy products and healthy options.
And again, talk about healthy eating, organic food, for those who are minorities who may not have that at home.
Good food economy provides access to healthy food for all communities, and it also provides access to good jobs and economic opportunity for all.
Los Angeles has become really one of the food leaders of the United States. Our food here is creative, it's innovative, it's entrepreneurial.
In fact, LA has been honored by the United Nations for its Good Food Purchasing Program, which has pumped $15 million into local food economies. The program is now spreading across the country.
Six years ago today, the city of Los Angeles became the first institution to adopt the Good Food Purchasing Policy, a landmark policy directing departments to purchase food that reflects our shared values in supporting local economies, nutrition, environmental sustainability, fair labor, and animal welfare.
California now also has the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, which decriminalizes street vendors and brings more variety and access to local food economies.
Yeah, part of my vision for a good food economy is having street vendors really help activate our streets.
Meanwhile, city leaders are also encouraging grocery stores in food-poor urban areas like South LA to provide more fresh produce and organic foods.
As the richest country in the world, and we're the richest state and the richest country in the world, everybody in our midst ought to have food, they ought to have good quality food, and it ought to be very accessible to them.
As for the good foods available right here at this event...
I liked it because it had, it had, it had good flavor to it than other normal foods.
LA may have just won itself a new convert to healthy eating.
The city also honored businesses that are good food champions and which provide healthy, affordable food to their community. While food was also on the minds of hundreds of Angelinos who came out for LA's first Filipino Angelino food festival and block party to enjoy some ethnic Filipino dishes created by some of LA's most innovative chefs and restaurants.
Eat, Play, Move, that's what it is. This is a traditional Filipino crispy pata. It's basically a pork leg that's deep-fried, but this time, the traditional one, it's just deep-fried and dry. This time, they made it so special because now it's smothered with spicy sauce over rice, so you can't go wrong with that.
It's nice seeing all the Filipinos come together, support each other, and support the local community.
So I think this is a really cool event. It kind of puts Filipino mainstream food in a spotlight, so you know, even if you're not Filipino, you can get, you can come down here to LA and try like various, various dishes.
Highlight for us today has been the food and the drink, obviously, but it's the people. You know, you meet so many cool people, we're all enjoying the same thing, we're all out here just showing some love for the Filipino and Filipino-American communities, and we're loving it.
I think it's really great, it's a way to get people together. Food, I think, is a big cultural thing that is easy to get people together, whether you're Filipino or not. I think, you know, getting a community together is always a benefit.
You may think you're just going to see wildlife photography, but you'll get a lot more at the National Geographic Photo Arc Exhibit. You may actually start to care about the fate of endangered animals.
Wildlife photographer Joel Sartori is on a mission to photograph 12,000 of the world's most threatened, endangered, or close to extinct animals, and get people to care about what happens to them. So far, he's photographed more than 8,000.
And I think humans are hunting them, which is not okay, and I think we should do something about it.
Sartori's photography has led to this National Geographic Photo Arc Exhibit at the Annenberg Space for Photography.
He actually travels to zoos, so all of the 8,400 species that he has photographed have been animals that are in human care, and so he travels to zoos across the nation, across the world.
So how do you get creepy, crawly, feathery, furry creatures to pose and sit still? Easy, they don't always. You just have to catch that magic moment from inside white boxes, black boxes, in front of dark and light backdrops. Almost always, at some point, if you're patient enough, a memorable photo is born.
I'm really into photography, and I'm taking a lot of photography classes, so I thought it'd be cool to see images of animals.
The exhibit has several interactive stations like this one, where you answer 15 questions to find out what kind of an animal you are. I have answered 13 of them, I have two more, so let's see. My favorite dinosaur, and I am a night owl, and let's see, I get lion.
Like, I've never seen a lot of these animals, it's cool to see them.
Some of the animals are endangered, their population's shrinking, while others are coming back from the brink of extinction. Sadly, this was the last known Columbia Basin pygmy rabbit. It died at the Portland Zoo and is now thought to be extinct. The white rhino is close behind with only two known animals left, but they may come back yet.
The white rhinoceroses, we only have two females left, and so we have scientists on four different continents that are working to see what they can do to continue that species. So, for example, they are studying to see if they can create an embryo.
We thought we were just gonna see pictures of cute animals, and it really does bring to life for them how important it is to make sure that these animals stay around so that future generations can enjoy them.
I think animals are really important for the world and what they do, so I think it's really heartbreaking that animals are going extinct.
While getting the white rhino's back is still up in the air, it seems Sartori has succeeded in his primary mission: getting humans who see his animals to care.
Sartori has visited 40 countries in his quest to photograph as many of the animals as possible. Well, speaking of animals, experience the wonder and magic of this year's Must See Holiday Lights at the LA Zoo. Unleash your creativity at an art and craft fair and hit the ice in downtown LA. All this and this week's Things to Do. LA's Must See Holiday Light Experience returns and promises to shine more brightly than ever, with a dazzling new area to explore and luminous updates throughout. Explore a magical wonderland of animal-inspired light displays while enjoying classic seasonal delights under the stars at the LA Zoo. Highlights include a brand-new version of the popular Twinkle Tunnel, a dramatic musical water and light show, a glittering disco ball forest, real reindeer, and visits with Santa on select nights. LA Zoo Lights is open nightly 6 to 10 p.m. from November 16th through January 6th, excluding November 22nd, December 24th, and December 25th. Barnes &amp; Doll Art Center presents Barnes &amp; Doll Art and Craft Fair. The fair is free, kid-friendly, and a wonderful way to enjoy art with friends and family. Just in time for some holiday shopping, you can expect a fun day as you purchase homemade goods catering to all tastes and budgets in support of local artists. Barnes &amp; Doll Art and Craft Fair showcases diverse work from the Art Center students and faculty, including handcrafted jewelry, ceramics, cards, prints, paintings, drawings, and photography. Browse work from local artisans and find the perfect holiday gift, from the next statement piece to the ideal coffee mug. Located next to the world-renowned Frank Lloyd Wright-designed Hollyhock House and a stone's throw from the LA County Museum Art Gallery. The Arts and Crafts Fair takes place on November 18th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. at Barnes &amp; Doll Art Center in LA. You gotta have some fun on the ice this winter season, so strap on your skates or rent some and hit the Pershing Square Ice Rink. The 7,200-square-foot rink will be open through January 21st, and more than 50,000 people are expected to strap on the blades during the two-month run. Lots of events are planned on the ice that will sure to keep the whole family entertained. For a list of events, go to HollywoodIcRinkDowntownLA.com. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app. Available from the App Store or on Google Play. MyLA311 links Angelinos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. Request graffiti removal. You can even pay your DWP bill. Keep up with what's going on at City Hall. And even report illegal dumping. MyLA311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hands.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Okay, good morning, good morning. Would everybody, shhhhh. Would everybody please take a seat? Everybody, please take a seat. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. Today's date is Friday, November 16th. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Buzkayeno Cidio, Englander Harris Dawson, Weiser Karats, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, ten members present in our quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Englander seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 8D to December 12th.
Okay, so ordered without objection. Let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committed report for Item 1 has been submitted, posted, and circulated for Council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items.
Uh, excuse me?
I'd like to recognize Mr. Bonin first.
As we receive and file 7H.
Okay, we're gonna be receiving 7H, receive and file. And you wanted to say something, Madam Clerk?
I do believe there's a request to hold Item 1 on the desk.
Yes, there is. That is my request. So let's hold Item 1, prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Item 8 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. So do we have cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards on the item.
Okay, let's hold that item, and then let's proceed.
And, Mr. President, that then takes Council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call up Mr. Englander.
Herman, I'm gonna ask you also, this is gonna be your fair and final warning, that if you disturb this meeting again and make these noises that you are, we're gonna escort
Good morning, Mr. President and members. I have a brief introduction that I'd like to make today. To my right, we have a delegation of folk that are from, I'm gonna do my best to say it correctly, I think it's Quan Zhou China. Could just stand up, stand up, let's give them a round of applause. They are with, it's Yorroyo?
Yes.
Pharmaceuticals and biotech company. This is their very first tour to the United States. They're gonna visit Los Angeles and California, and then I think from there they're going to Utah, and also New York City and Washington DC. Let's give them another round of applause. I want to recognize Rosa Russell, Rosa, get up a little closer, from our Human Relations Commission. They, Rosa had the opportunity to meet their CEO and Chairman at one of our interfaith meetings or what have you, was informed that they would be traveling here, and we wanted to greet you and welcome you to the city of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, their chairman, Mr. Wong, is stuck in New York, I think because of weather. So what he, what he's done though, we have Mr. K. Mr. K is with us today, kinda stepping into some big shoes of the CAO, CEO. We're so happy that you're here, and we hope that your trip is a very, very productive trip. But we also hope that you truly enjoy yourself. We are proud of the city of angels, the city of Los Angeles. We have so many things that I hope you have an opportunity to do. We have people here from over 100 countries, we speak over 100 languages. I know that you're here promoting healthy food. Trust me, we've got all of the food in the world, from all over the world, in this great city. So we just wanted to officially welcome you to the United States, and to welcome you to the city of Los Angeles. So I would like for you to take this back, if you would, Mr. K, to the CEO, Mr. Wong. It is a welcome certificate from the city of Los Angeles, and it's signed by every member of this council, to let each and every one of you know how excited we are to have you here, that you are truly welcome, and we hope that you stay and you have a good time. And if you would pass on to Mr. Wong, if any members of this council or the mayor visit you guys back in your city, that we want to see this on the wall.
Of course, of course.
All right? Anyway, let's give them another round of applause, and welcome them to the great city of Los Angeles. Let's take a quick photo.
Oh, so like, uh...
You put you in the middle.
I'm in the middle now?
Yeah. Okay, now we're gonna go in the back. Rosa, if you would lead them, we're gonna go in the back. Sergeants, can we let them out? We're gonna take them in the back. One more round of applause for our special...
Yeah, let's give them a big round of applause. All right, we now like to welcome to the podium Councilmember Mike Bonin for a very special presentation. We need a couple DOT traffic control officers over here. Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. Today, I am rising to celebrate a remarkable, fantastic cultural institution here in Los Angeles. Beyond Baroque, the Literary Arts Center based at the Old City Hall in Venice, is celebrating its 50th birthday. And they have been for a half-century now, a remarkable institution in Los Angeles, celebrating so much of what is important and rich about our literary tradition. They offer a diverse variety of literary and arts programming, including readings, workshops, new music, and education. They also house a bookstore with the largest collection of new poetry books and CDs for sale, and an archive that houses more than 40,000 books, including small press and limited edition publications chronicling the history of poetry movements in Los Angeles and beyond. Through the years, Beyond Baroque, I like to think, has sort of helped to write into Venice the literary and artistic DNA. It has been a home and muse to the Beats and to the burgeoning punk movement, home to visiting scholars, and to some of the richest and most creative poets in Los Angeles. Many of the city's lead literary talents, including Dennis Cooper, Wanda Coleman, Tom Waits, Agzine Svenka, Amy Gersler, our alumni of the Wednesday Night Poetry Workshop, which has been going on decades and continues to this day. And many of the world's best-known independent artists, including Patti Smith, Michael McClure, Danagoya, and Vigo Mortensen, have performed on its stage. This past weekend, we had an opportunity to celebrate in Venice style Beyond Baroque's 50th anniversary with their Bohemian Bacchanal. The event honored Vigo Mortensen and Will Alexander for their significant contributions to Beyond Baroque and to the literary tradition in Los Angeles, and featured performances by John Densmore, John Doe, Agzine Svenka, Bobby Bradford, Dwight Tribble, and Lester McFarland, and a lot of others. And I'm excited in a moment that we'll hear a little bit of poetry from Will and from S.A. Griffin. Before that, though, I do want to note that Beyond Baroque is both a home to and a source of a rich history and legacy of literary contributions. They're dedicated really to the possibilities of language and to advancing the love of literary arts, and for that, we are tremendously grateful. They are known to poets, they are known to aficionados of literary arts, but they are largely invisible to too many people, and I think they're one of the things in Venice that I am most proud of. I was happy to work with them, shit, 20 years ago, in curating the poetry walls at Venice Beach, where Beyond Baroque went out and they got permission from poets with a connection to Venice. And inscribed on the police substation at the Reckon Park headquarters, and the bathrooms at Venice Beach are the words of poets with a connection to Los Angeles and a connection to Venice. So let me first bring up and welcome George Drury Smith, the founder of Beyond Baroque, and the current Executive Director, Richard Modiano. And let me give them this certificate. Let's squeeze in here, do a photo with him.
Thank you, Councilman Bonin, and members of the City Council. Let me take two minutes to tell you what happened, and the city's part in it. In 1964, I moved to Venice and naively hoped to start a new literary movement. I called it Beyond Baroque. But it was not until 1968 that I was able to actually publish the avant-garde literary magazine Beyond Baroque from a storefront on what is now Abbott Kenny Boulevard in Venice. The magazine appeared almost exactly 50 years ago today. Then, hoping to inspire a literary renaissance, I used extra space in that Venice storefront for an art gallery, and soon afterwards, poetry, musical performances, writers' workshops, and even a library. Even though absolutely no one agreed with my literary ideas, people flocked to this place, devoted to writing and other arts, a sort of oasis in what some called a literary desert. One thing I've learned in my 91 years is that you have to have goals and work towards them. You don't usually reach your goal, but if you go with the flow and accept what you get, it'll be different and far better than you ever dreamed. That's what happened with Beyond Baroque. It was the people who came here, not me, who shaped it into the widely recognized place it is today. My contribution was to let them do it. Another thing I learned was that, given space, the arts can flourish. When, after its first decade, Beyond Baroque overflowed my space, we approached Los Angeles City Councilman Pat Russell, and she led the way to leasing the city's then recently vacated old Venice City Hall to Beyond Baroque. And that's where it has flourished for nearly another 39 years. It is due to the support of the city of Los Angeles and the space it provides, as well as more than a generation of participants, supporters, volunteers, and the talented directors such as Richard Modiano, who followed me, that Beyond Baroque has become the place it is today, recognized worldwide as a haven for the writer, for writers. So it is with enormous gratitude that I thank you and our wonderful city of Los Angeles for continuing... for continuing to provide support and this all-important space where the arts can flourish. Thank you.
Well, Mr. President, City Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this recognition of Beyond Baroque, and I particularly want to extend my thanks to Mike Bonin, who has been a steadfast supporter of Beyond Baroque and, in fact, the arts in general. Los Angeles is a world-class city for the arts with its museums, its concerts halls, its local nightclubs and music venues, and also for its literary venues. Not only Beyond Baroque, but there is the World Stage in La Marte Park and Tia Chuches' Cafe Cultural in the San Fernando Valley. So Los Angeles, thanks to your support and to the people who patronize these organizations, is also a world-class city for the literary arts. Thank you. So it's never quite as good to talk about poetry as it is to experience poetry. So I've asked two of Beyond Baroque's fabled poets to read a bit for us. The first is S.A. Griffin. He's a poet and a DJ for KillRadio.org and co-editor of Outlaw Bible for American Poetry. And notably, he received the Firecracker Award as Best in Alternative Press and was named Best Performance Poet by Wanda Coleman for the LA Weekly.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm very honored to be here today to help celebrate George Drury Smith and Beyond Baroque 50 years, and thank you for recognizing. It's really pretty amazing. William Carlos Williams wrote, "It is difficult to get the news from poems, yet men die miserably every day," for lack of what is found there. So I'm gonna read two poems. The first one is by Roque Dalton, and I would like first to have it read in Spanish, and I will read it in English.
Thank you. My name is Antonieta Villamil, and I'm a poet. Como tú. Como tú amo el amor, la vida, el dulce encanto de las cosas, el paisaje celeste de los días de enero. También mi sangre bulle y río por los ojos que han conocido el brote de las lágrimas. Creo que el mundo es bello, que la poesía es como el pan de todos. Y que mis venas no terminan en mí sino en la sangre, unánime de los que luchan por la vida, el amor, las cosas, el paisaje y el pan, la poesía de todos. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Like you, by Roque Dalton. Like you, I love, love life, the sweet smell of things, the sky, blue landscape of January days. And my blood boils up and I laugh through eyes that have known the buds of tears. I believe the world is beautiful and that poetry, like bread, is for everyone, and that my veins don't end in me but in the unanimous blood of those who struggle for life, love, little things, landscape, and bread, the poetry of everyone. And that translation was by Jack Hirschman, a very highly-regarded and wonderful poet up in San Francisco. And this second piece is by Francie Dean Smith, Frances Dean Smith. She was an avid supporter of poets and poetry everywhere, but especially in Venice at Beyond Baroque, and this is from the last book that she had published before she passed away some years ago. Call. I rest as the day warms, hear through closed windows the faint repeated call of the foghorn three miles away. It warns off sailors, but I don't know who those sailors are, and it warns me. You are not in charge. Your children can be taken from you. Your life ended over and over before it is over. Listen, it says, a voice, that's all you have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And to close us, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for a few words from Will Alexander, who's the artist-in-residence at Beyond Baroque. His list of literary credits is about as lengthy as Allen Ginsberg's Howl, so I will not go through the whole list of it. But he is the poet-in-residence at Beyond Baroque. He's an author of over 30 books of poetry, prose, and drama, and some of his most recent awards are the award for Sunrise in Armageddon in 2006 and the Jackson Poetry Prize in 2016.
Thank you, Councilman Bonin, and for all in attendance today. It's my pleasure to read before you. It feels like we're in, I'll say a couple of words, we're in a renaissance of the arts because of the current situation. It seems like the old world is falling right before our eyes, and new things are about to appear. And this is a new appearance here. It's called Nexus of Phantoms from my book, called A Sri Lankan Locksodrome from New Directions Press, New York. In a lorikeet cave, motions exist of disintegrated swans in a translocated lake brimming with harvested poisons sealed by corruptive postmortems. Such swans staggered by microbial reasoning, their aggressive nests anatomical with anomaly, with drifts of strenuous incarnating meanings, with a thirst which hurtles conspiratorial invasives alive with coronal oceanics, open like a clouded trail of rendings. Analogous with the ox, the pelicans, the mergansus, perhaps with the petrels and the gannets under the power of darted mocking orations. Analogous, the swans analogous, looking back on solemn blood perusal, like a form of death breaking roses on the shore. It is the example of phonograms of lost and compacted lenses, turning within a charismatic fall line or an ice and eph, or what an avian would announce in Greenland as a catabatic wind. The swans like a haze of magnetism or implied gondola locations where the scent of each lorikeet is consumed and brought to dazzling eclipse refugance. In another fosi, in another depth, their form self-challenged in a cloak of suns, their power derevealed with seven moons burning reduced to two intense incendiary magnets. And these incendiary magnets like a nexus of phantoms scattered across a geometric optometry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
All right, we'll go in the back. We can go this way. Thank you for your support and your support. Come this way.
Folks, please collect all your belongings from the seats. You'll be exiting out the back. Collect all your belongings.
Somebody grab my, on that side. Everybody stare down. There's a chair over there. Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. Mr. Coretts, if we could, one second. Mr. Coretts, if I could just have a point of personal privilege here. I'm just so excited. Members, get closer. The man that is sitting to my right, I met when I was 17 years old. I haven't seen him in over 45 years. We met on the campus of Lincoln University, the oldest African-American school, college in this country. By some quirk of fate, we wound up pledging the same fraternity, alpha phi alpha. And we also pledged at the same time, I think it was a total of 10 or 12 weeks, five weeks one semester, and then five weeks the next. We would have to wake up the same time in the morning. We would have to dress the same. When we actually were, became members of the fraternity, and this was at a time Mr. Price and Mr. Harris Dawson, this is when afros, we had serious afros, we had to cut all of our hair off. We were bald. You guys see a lot of these movies they make today about individuals being dressed in the same costumes and dancing, they step movies. We were the pioneers of that, where we would have to step to work every day. They put us shortest to the tallest. This, my friend, Stoney, his nickname, Warner Durnell, was the second to the tallest, and I, as usual, was the smallest. There's a bond that can never be broken. And I just can't articulate to you guys how thrilled I am to have a man, even though I haven't seen for 45 years, a man that is my brother. And he was a good guy. So the good guys accepted me and helped make me a good guy. And I'm just so proud and honored, and I want to introduce to you my line brother and dear friend, Warner Durnell. Stand up. Give him, give him, give him a round of applause for me. Now, we could stand here and sing fraternity songs if you want, and Mr. Price is going. Anyway, thank you, guys. But again, my dear friend, when we finish with this, we're gonna go spend some quality time alone. I'm so excited about Stoney finding out what you have done through the years. I know that Stoney was from Westchester, Pennsylvania. I, that time, came via New Jersey, had brought a bunch of young African-Americans together. Ten of us survived that ordeal that we had to go through. The name, that, oh, actually nine. The name of our line was The Damned, but we made it. Anyway, welcome, my friend, one more time. It means a lot to me. Mr. Coretts, I really thank you for allowing me those few minutes. The floor is yours.
It's a little bit of a hard act to follow. Congratulations on reuniting with your good friends.
I'm just so excited. I apologize, Mr. Price.
Oh, not at all. Colleagues, this is National Apprenticeship Week. It's a national celebration that offers leaders in business, education, and labor, and other crucial partners a chance to demonstrate their support for apprenticeship. But more importantly, this week-long event highlights the benefits of apprenticeship programs in preparing a highly-skilled workforce to meet the talent and needs of employers across diverse industries. And here in Los Angeles, there are various apprenticeship programs, one in particular that focuses on helping our most vulnerable population, and that is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization Hospitality Training Academy, or HTA. HTA has been a champion in moving forward apprenticeships in the hospitality industry, and that's why I'm happy to be joined here today by HTA, several of their apprentices, employers, and partners. HTA runs two apprenticeship programs with the U.S. Department of Labor and the California Department of Apprenticeship Standards, one for culinary positions and the other for room attendant training. It is committed to providing the skill level and diversity of the quickly-growing hospitality industry through these non-traditional apprenticeship programs. And at least 70% of apprentices in HTA and their programs end up with a union job. That's why we're pleased also to be joined here today by Unite Here Local 11, that represents 31,000 members and 160 hospitality and food service employers in Los Angeles and Orange County, as well as in Arizona. Their partnership helps to make workers more efficient and productive, and through their relationships with the hospitality industry, Unite Here helps find positions for these individuals once they're trained. And on a personal note, this is near and dear to my heart because my father was in the hospitality industry, and he was also an active member of Unite Here Local 11, and I walked picket lines with him from the time I was a little kid, and so I always feel I honor his memory when I'm able to do something like this. And so we're joined today by five of these successful apprentices who have already completed at least 1,000 hours of work after their initial training, and I want to take a minute to acknowledge them for their hard work. They are Charmel Newell, who completed her hours at SLS Hotel; Alfredo Gutierrez, who completed his hours at Sheraton Gateway Los Angeles Hotel; Douglas Pennate, who completed his hours at Levy Restaurants; Bree Humes, who completed her hours at Hyatt Regency Los Angeles International Airport; and Xena Reed, who completed her hours at Viceroy. In addition, we'd like to welcome Kristen Turner from Levy Restaurants, Grace Moncrief, who is with the Jeremy, Colin Smelser from the Sheraton Gateway Los Angeles Hotel, and Ali Bokeish from Beverly Hilton. Let's give them a big hand also. And my apologies if I mangled anybody's names slightly. Thank you all for working in partnership with HTA and Unite Here Local 11 to support the apprenticeship programs and provide these unique opportunities to help these job seekers with a way to find more permanent gainful employment. This couldn't be possible without the support and buy-in of these employers and partners. This is really a team effort at many levels, and we're very grateful for that. One of these critical partners is Greg Irish, the executive director of the City of Los Angeles's Workforce Development Board. He's dedicated his entire career to public service and workforce development programs, and I'd like to ask him to say a few words.
Welcome, Mr. Irish. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. By the way, they're gonna be opening up their Culinary Training Academy in your district, Western and Pico. Pico, in a few months. Let me say that the visual here, it says it all, all right? It's about jobs. It's about folks making living wages with benefits that can propel them into the middle class. This model, this labor-management partnership, and the councilman mentioned, Unite Here Local 11, and all of these employers, have gotten together to train folks for the hospitality industry that keeps us within the top five destinations for anyone who wants to visit in the world. Now, it's a paradigm shift in terms of workforce development here in the city, as well as the nation. They've been asked to take this model to other cities, Philadelphia, Las Vegas, and Seattle. So it's a model that works. When we identified as a city that we didn't have African-Americans involved in this industry, they're disappearing, they took up the mantra, they tackled this issue with a paltry sum from the city, using their labor-management partnership money, with the help of Bob Farrell, the former council member. Come on over here, Bob.
In fact, Bob, come on, let's.
Come on over here.
Let's give him a round of applause. He represented, he represented council district.
Come on in here. And the faith-based community recruit African-Americans, and they've made a phenomenal, a phenomenal amount of progress in getting African-Americans. They've also taken up the issue of transgender individuals and gender non-conforming. They're recruiting them and getting them in this industry, and we know they have some of the highest numbers of unemployment. And lastly, they're using their own resources to connect women primarily, but the survivors of domestic violence in our domestic violence shelters, they're taking them through this program, and they are homeless people and they're survivors of domestic violence. So this is a model that's going, the other cities in the country have asked them to bring it to them. bring it to them. We have it here. It's homegrown, and I hope they continue to partner with us because we're so bureaucratic all the time, it's not always worth it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Give him a round of applause.
By the way, Mr. Chair, Mr. Price remembers when we had afros.
Yeah, he does remember that.
Now, I'd like to introduce Heather Rosman, Executive Director of the Hotel Association of Los Angeles.
Hey, everyone. Good morning. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations on behalf of the Hotel Association and California Hotel and Lodging Association. We are huge supporters of education, and we're here to support you throughout your employment. You've chosen a great career, so we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Tom Walsh Garcia, who is the Chair of Hospitality Training Academy's Board of Trustees and the President Emeritus of Unite Here Local 11.
Tom, good to see you. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Corretts. I think you're right. Your father would be very proud of what the success we've had here with the Hospitality Training Academy. As was mentioned, we have over 160 employer partners, 31,000 members in Southern California and Arizona, and we have many important people to recognize for the success we've had. It's already been said, but what we do is we connect individuals in some of the poorest, most vulnerable parts of our city to, and give them the skills and the confidence and the experience to then find full-time employment with good wages and good benefits, including pensions in many cases. So we feel like we're playing a very important role in our city, and we have a lot more work to do, and I'd like to now turn it over to our Executive Director, Aiden Foreman.
Thank you. I'll make this quick. Good afternoon. I just wanted to say thank you from the HTA to all of you. It means so much to have you here, for our program to be recognized, for Councilmember Corretts to take this extra step of your time. We also are honored by our community partners. We have with us today Rachel Robles from the State of California's Division of Apprenticeship Standards, because we have a state apprenticeship program. We are thrilled to have L.A. Unified Division of Adult and Community Education here with us today, Oscar Mayer, Anna Gray, and Sam Powers. They've been tremendously helpful in getting our program up to, up to where it needs to be at the right level. We have U.S. Department of Labor, which couldn't be here today, but wants pictures and all the information about our event to tweet about it. We also are really thrilled to always work every day with Jan Perry and Greg Irish, who make this program what it is today through their support. We also, of course, Greg said something about Bob Farrell, but what can you say about Bob Farrell that people don't already know? He's just a force in the African-American community and helps recruit every day for us, along with Denise Edwards and Reverend Donald Wilson. Also, I want to take this moment to thank our lead culinary instructor, Chef Mitchell Frieder, who makes our program what it is through our incredible curriculum and his incredible teaching skills, and also the HTA staff, which is behind me. They, every day, work so hard to make this program work, to find these students, to make sure that they are successful, and really, it's a group effort, and I want to say thank you.
And although there are so many wonderful partners in this, I have to say, this is one of the more inspiring examples of collaboration between labor and management that you can find, and I hope that we are able to work with you to help replicate this across the country because it's an incredible program. So thank you, everyone who's involved here, and now I would like to present a certificate on behalf of the city.
Greg. Okay, let's take up item one, and I'm gonna kick this over to, for us to start it off. I'm gonna ask Mr. Blumenfield if he would begin. I know that this is gonna be a very, Miss Bob, a very contentious debate between all of the council members here because we're, this could be viewed as controversial, but I would have to commend you for doing a stellar job in your committee, and somehow you were able to get this person to this point. But with that said, on this very important, very controversial issue, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Blumenfield.
Very much, Mr. President. Please come, come forward. Yeah, we had a very, we had a grueling vetting session in committee, because when you get somebody who's so unknown to this city, has never, never done anything with the city, really has no background at all, and the mayor just plucks them out of the sky, we really have to vet them seriously. And so, obviously, for those who don't know what I'm talking about, we're saying all this in jest because Cecilia has been just an extraordinary member of the city family for many years, and taking this next step to be on the Board of Public Works is, is just so natural and so easy. You sailed through committee, and, you know, and you've been such a great asset to the mayor's office and to, to all of us for so long that we probably could just do this on consent very easily, but instead, you're here, and we want to, we want to hear from you a little bit. You told us in, in committee, but just to give you, give you the chance to tell us a little bit about what your, what your goals and aspirations are for, for the Board of Public Works, and how you plan on, on working with this, this group of misfits that, that is the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield. I'm gonna first say some thank yous. I had to write it down. I'm a little nervous, and I didn't want to forget anybody. And it's only my second time at the table in my 13 years here, so you'll forgive me. So again, thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield. Appreciate it. And I'd also like to thank, of course, Mayor Garcetti and Chief of Staff Anna Guerrero for the opportunity. And I'd like to thank Team Blumenfield for their support during the process, as well as the council president and his staff, positions I know very, very closely and are near and dear to my heart. And I want to also thank my family, who, my posse right here behind me, my grandmother, Romi, my mommy, Lane, my Aunt Lorraine, my stepdad, Michael, and of course, my husband, Mario, and all my friends.
Let us give your family a round of applause. You guys, you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
As I've mentioned before, I began my career here 13 years ago in these chambers as a legislative
deputy, and I've served the city in various capacities on both sides of the bridge. So I feel like I know how to get things done here, and I know all of you and worked with all of you, or most of you at least, really well and intimately in the past, so I'm looking forward to continuing that work. Priorities are, and remain what they've always been, to serve the citizens and do the most important thing, which is the equitable delivery of basic city services. One thing I plan on looking at, very, very intimately, is the attrition rate in the city and how we're gonna address that through opportunities like targeted local hire, like women in untraditional roles, like apprenticeships programs we just heard about, something that I look forward to working with, my, my board colleagues, and of course, all the council and the mayor as well. I've always been taught that short speeches win elections, so I'm gonna leave it at that and let you ask any questions you may have, and please be kind.
Okay. All right. Hold on to your seat because I am calling. Now, I want to recognize Mr. Paul Corretts, and we know how intense Mr. Corretts can be.
I'm trying to think, now that you've said that, of a tough question, but I don't think I have any because I don't think we could find anyone brighter, more capable, more experienced, and equally important, a labor activist and environmentalist. And even that all wouldn't convince me to support her, except she is also a very well-known cat lover. So having, having everything that could be going for her, I guess I will recommend her vote as well, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Englander.
I want to only wish you the best, but more importantly, say thank you, because not only are you a breath of fresh air, and you've been such a great friend, and I'm gonna miss working with you, and especially in this new capacity, but you understand the intricacies of so many aspects of this job. And your institutional knowledge, and your insight, and your vision is so welcome, and I only wish you the best. I know we're gonna be in better hands citywide with you in this seat, and so I really, truly appreciate you stepping up. Wish you the best.
Okay. We have other members that obviously have a lot of concerns because their names are popping up, so let me start off by recognizing Mr. Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since you are a constituent of the 13th District, I just gotta, just go in the Wayback Machine just for a minute. I, I met Cecilia when she was volunteering as a docent on the Echo Park Home Tour.
That's right.
And I had just heard that you were about to be hired and become my colleague on the staff of my predecessor. And so I know Cecilia as a constituent, as a friend, as a coworker, as a colleague, and one thing I, I know about Cecilia is that she does the work, and we need more people who are relentless in their pursuit of getting the job done. And I just wanted to put that out there because I think that we'll be in very good hands with you as a Public Works Commissioner, because I know that you have all of the ingredients that a great public servant needs to have, and that is, you care, you work hard, you're intelligent, and you're relentless. So I think we're gonna be in very good hands, and I've just gotta validate everything that Bob said, and your nomination to this commission, and my best to Mario and the whole family sitting there. You always did roll deep, and it's good to see that you still do that, so we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Okay, Ms. C.C., we, we're, I'm gonna recognize the council's lawyer at this point, Mr. Paul Krikorian.
I don't know if I want to take that role on. Thank you, Mr. President, but, but I do just want to rise to applaud the mayor on this appointment, because Cecilia, you are, I think, the ideally suited person for this job at this moment with your experience. The Board of Public Works, other than direct public safety, the Board of Public Works does more than to impact the everyday lives of people than probably any other part of this city. It oversees all of the services that we hear about the most from our constituents, and it operates in a, in a context where there are never enough resources to deliver all of the services that everybody needs and wants. In your experience here around this chamber, in being able to figure out solutions to get to yes, to be able to work with each of the disparate council districts and their representatives and all of our personalities, and say no when you needed to say no, but figure out ways that you can work with us to meet our priorities, it's always been beyond compare. Your ability to do that has been incredibly admirable, incredibly difficult to do that. You're gonna have a similar role as a board member, and I have every confidence that you're gonna be able to find solutions, to be able to get to yes, to be able to build those strong relationships with each of our districts and each of the bureaus that you're going to be overseeing, and you're gonna have a lasting impact on the city for many generations to come. So I want to thank you for your willingness to step up and take this position, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Bonin.
And thank you to the mayor for making the nomination. I understand he tried to get you to accept this several times before, but you had declined saying you wouldn't do it as long as Englander was on the council, so thank you, Mr. Englander, for creating this opportunity. I want to thank you for, for accepting this. I have known you maybe nearly as long as Mitch, I guess, when we were both staffers around here. I have worked with you on government stuff, I've worked with you on political stuff, I worked with you on my wedding, among other things, and you are, you're an incredible force in, in getting things done. I can remember dozens of times where we'd come up against some obstacle, and I'd wander down to the mess or ask you to come up to my office, and I'd tell you about it, and you'd roll your eyes, and you'd sigh deeply, and then you'd get it done. You would remove the obstacle, and in, in each of my offices, I have a, a tapestry hanging up of Ganesha, the Hindu deity whose responsibility is to remove obstacles, and you have been consistently a remover of obstacles, and there's, there is such a need for that in, as Mr. Krikorian said, a, a broad and vast agency that touches our constituents in so many different ways, and there will be a number of us calling you, whether you're assigned to our district or not, asking you to, to do that deep sigh and to get stuff done. And just one other thing I want to note is that in politics, there's a lot of people who are not all that direct. You are direct. You are blunt, and you are no BS, but you are always warm about it, and I have never left a meeting with you or an interaction with you, even when we didn't agree, where there was any ill will or any bad feelings at all. And you're a rock star, and I'm glad the mayor got you on this commission.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you. Allow me to join, acquire, Mr. President, in supporting Mayor Garcetti's appointment here before us. Cecilia, you've done so much for this city, and you've come with just a vast ability and experience in, from public affairs to city government, and I've, in the last six years, have seen you being just driven, focused, and determined, and I'm really proud to support this and stand in a time where we're doing all we can to create more efficiencies in, in the bureau, and I see President of the Commission, Kevin James, here. We've had ongoing discussions on how to better the bureau, and we recognize the fact that we are the largest city in the country that has operation of our streets and maintenance of our streets, not under one umbrella. It's like having the police department, where you have detectives and patrol not talking to each other. But I'm hopeful that we can advance those efforts to build more efficiencies within the bureau, and I know you'll help lead that, so I really appreciate your service to our city and the commitment that you've made, and to do this in front of a loving and supportive family, it's also a blessing too. So congratulations, and looking forward to working with you and the rest of the bureau.
Mr. Englander, again, or is that an accident? All right. To you, but to your family. You did do a good job. I may have said it kind of jokingly, but... And I've, in the last six years, have seen you being just driven, focused, and determined. And I'm really proud to support this and stand in a time where we're doing all we can to create more efficiencies in the bureau. And I see President of the Commission, Kevin James, here. We've had ongoing discussions on how to better the bureau. And we recognize the fact that we are the largest city in the country that has operation of our streets and maintenance of our streets, not under one umbrella. It's like having the police department where you have detectives and patrol not talking to each other. But I'm hopeful that we can advance those efforts to build more efficiencies within the bureau and I know you'll help lead that. So I really appreciate your service to our city and the commitment that you've made in to do this in front of a loving and supportive family. It's also a blessing too. So congratulations and looking forward to working with you and the rest of the bureau.
Mr. Englander again, or is that an accident? All right. To you, but to your family. You did do a good job. I may have said it kind of jokingly, but I truly mean that. I don't think there's ever been an appointment by this council where the entire body was excited. There's probably not a member that's seated around this horseshoe that C.C. hasn't helped get some project done that we believed was impossible. I'm so excited. You know, you're the right person for the job, you're a good person, and you'll have an opportunity to serve with some great people. I have to recognize Mr. James, it's here. If it weren't for him and his support of Baker Mayfield from Oklahoma, who is now the quarterback for the Cleveland Browns and he holds my hand every week. So you're serving with a good man there. But anyway, I'm so excited to call for this vote. So with that said, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's give her a round of applause and congratulations. Mr. Englander.
I just wanted to make a quick announcement that Lucas Wiggins, who's a student, who's interning with me over here, is from CSUN, has been here observing because he's normally in the recita office. I just wanted to recognize Lucas.
Let's give Lucas a round of applause. And good luck. Mr. Murphy, are you here? Sean, I see you in the back. Come on up. Okay, Mr. Murphy, you have two minutes, one for item eight and the other for your general public comment.
Good morning. Item eight, I'm not, I'm against. General public comment, wish my fans happy Thanksgiving, and please do not go to the Hollywood Christmas Parade. I have not been satisfied with the Hollywood Christmas Parade. If the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce was right here, I would tell it to their face. We don't go to Hollywood Christmas Parades and have delay in concerts. We go to the parade to start the parade on time. Thank you.
Please come forward, Mr. Previn. So you have two minutes, you have items eight, and then you have your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Item eight is one of two separate kinds of lean items that you have going on on today's agenda and I appreciate what you're trying to do there. There was not a quorum, I believe, on October 15th, which is why some of them have appeared in the section where you can speak about these liens against constituents. One of the concerns was that up in that environment and also in the public safety environment, that was in budget finance, there's activity where these kinds of favors for constituents result in discussions about pay-to-play. You could read in the Los Angeles Times about the other issue where in CD 14, he'll be back soon, hopefully, they had a significant...
Mr. President, the speaker is off topic.
Well, there's 18-0160 S197, which is a CD 14 lien, but I don't agree with you that I'm not talking about the issues.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay, so I'll try to be brief. Campaign finance is how we fund elections here and there's a public matching fund program. And today you're about to hear from a bunch of people who are going to applaud your looking at it. But I want to emphasize that looking at it is one thing, but in Studio City, we've extended an invitation through our neighborhood council to Mike Bonin, who's a great man, and Paul Coretts, who's certainly a great leader. And the two of them have provided this motion to adjust it. We would just like to have an open conversation and all of you are welcome, of course, and certainly the folks from the advocacy groups who are here, Rob Quan, Wayne Williams, and Trent Lang, and Jill Stewart, and Caroline, all of them are welcome to participate because we just want to make it absolutely transparent what's underfoot, what the plan is, and try to bring forward something that's equitable for the candidates. There are so many candidates that run for office and yet none of them get any of the public matching money. That's what we found, except for the incumbents and the big-time players. And we do appreciate you getting that money. We have a plan where you can still get that money, but we have to share and make it so that people's voices are heard. Perhaps you saw our open forum series on the last two Fridays of the month. Thank you, sir, and look forward to a robust discussion when we can get some dates on the books. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. You're Pearl Baxter today?
Did you call my name? That's my fucking name.
This is your multiple public comment period.
Regarding costs and noncompliance of such code violations due to inspection costs, on motion CD 14-180160 S197, I demand that Jose Wezar forgive and forget this lien. For this reason, it is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. I, the people of the state, declare the city of Los Angeles a terrorist, motivated, scumbag, political machine. And I decide the right to say what is good in the interest of the public. Forty-two U.S.C., 1983. Fuck you. Now, as far as my general public comment, the FBI investigation of Rochelle Rios Wezar and that of former past councilman Jose Wezar, I want every name of Jose Wezar etched off every fucking building. I want every tagger in the city of Los Angeles to remove every fucking name of Jose Wezar for bringing disgrace, disruption, and abuse to the public's interests of forum here. Fuck your Rule 77 and fuck white nigger politicians who fuck with me in my life. Back in 2012, when Jose Wezar threw me in jail for false allegations and made my fucking life so fucking frustrated due to discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Now let the FBI stick their fucking foot up your ass, Wezar. Fuck you and your wife.
Thank you for the insightful comments.
Yes, so go ahead. Yes, regarding item 8B, we would ask that that filthy cocksucker Jose Wezar, please forgive the lien at 523 North Niva Place, because now that he's under FBI investigation, we know that this lien was done illegally. Because you see, the gentleman that owns this property did not pay off the building inspector. He didn't pay off Rochelle Wezar, his girlfriend, or the council member. So now we know to get rid of this fucking lien. Also, to the rest of you criminals, oh, I'm sorry, council members, I'm sorry, council members, we would ask that Marquis Harris Dawson get rid of the lien on 6621 Hoover Street. Why? Because we don't want to see Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson become the next Jose Wezar. Let's change the city for the good. And now, I got good news. Rochelle Ray Wezar has now been thrown the fuck off of the Women's Commission. Let's give it a hand. Now you see, back in May, I told you that she had access under the city charter to all of those confidential employee complaints against elected officials, didn't I? Didn't I try to help you avoid what happened? And what you did is that you stuck a large, big dick up my small fucking ass. That's what you did. See, I'm trying to help you. You're trying to sodomize people. So now the big, black FBI dick now is up your ass. And I insist on one thing, throw Jose Wezar the fuck out of the city and send him to fucking Guantanamo Bay where he belongs with his fat fucking cow wife.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Our next speaker is Ryan Reza Farsai. Could the Sergeant of Arms get Mr. Spindler away from the microphone, please?
You're a gay guy, you don't understand. When the wife gets fat, you...
Have a seat, Mr. Spindler. Sit down. Women, you gotta keep your manners.
Mr. Spindler, you've been warned multiple times, we're going to ask you to leave the Sergeants, please remove Mr. Spindler. And the next speaker from the public is Ryan Reza Farsai. Is Ryan here? Morning, sir. Go ahead.
8A, 8C. And I have one minute of public comment, sir. So we're talking about one minute of public comment. My name is Otto Hyder, no, it's Otto Carl Herman Hyder. I'm living in his home. He was the one that betrayed the United States of America. He was a spy for the United States of America and Germany and he led us into war, World War II, killed millions of people. Otto Carl Herman Hyder, H-I-I-E, allegiance to England and Israel, created the State of Israel in 1947 after the World War II. Millions of people died. When you sign up to be a veteran or to sign up for the army, you're signing up to give your life. Why? That means you're not a Christian or a Catholic by definition. And if the State of Israel is leasing the house from my neighbor in Belcourt Park, Scott Niedermeyer, I want Benjamin Netanyahu to step down. I'm the leader of the Israel army, the most moral army in the world. My name is Ryan Reza Farsai.
Thank you, sir. Now...
Number 8.
Oh, yeah, one minute of general public comment. Go ahead. Okay, all right, all right, so you're done, sir.
Actually, I signed up for everything. So I have 8A, 8B, and 8C. That's three minutes.
Okay, all right.
And one minute for public comment.
Clerk says you can do one more minute, yes.
One more minute for public comment, ladies and gentlemen. My Hebrew brothers want all your money. They don't want to share. They're not in the business of sharing. They want to drink your money, they drink it.
Mr. President, the speaker can only speak to Agenda...
The attorney, Mr. Attorney, Mrs. Attorney has signed you up.
Agenda item number eight, he's already done his general public comment. He can speak on item number eight on the agenda.
Item number eight, ladies and gentlemen, the city is very good at putting liens on your property. They're also good at putting debt on your back. On Tuesday, they didn't let me talk, they said the public was satisfied on the item. But here's what it is, they're very good at putting liens and putting debt on your back. They have a $9.9 billion budget, that's 27 and a half million. On Tuesday, they spent 71 million. I came up here to talk on two items because I actually care about the homeless, I care about what we're going to do with them. But you didn't say I could talk, you said the public has been satisfied. That's how they do it, ladies and gentlemen, they smile at you and they put more debt on your back. They have 27 and a half million dollar daily budget and they don't know how to balance the budget. That's Governor Brown. He just raped all the business owners with derivative pricing on Edison. Why? Because he's Edison's best friend. That's why he wants you to have solar panels, so he can make electricity and sell it to you higher. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
And, Mr. President, there is a request to continue 8C until December 12th.
Without objection. And then do you have a motion to confirm the liens for 8A, 8B, and 8E?
Yes, and a second for that motion?
Okay, moved and seconded without objection. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
All right, we'll return to general public comment. Ms. Antonia Ramirez, please.
Stop the crimes against illegal, law-abiding homeless women by racist, hate-mongering, chungo Latino wetbacks and gangbangers and white trash and junkies and skid row niggers who, incidentally, are not the victims, but the wicked, violent, evil, gang-stalking, lazy-ass motherfucking criminal thieves and assholes. These uncivilized savages deserve to die. Today, once again, the Music Center Grand Park, male and female bathrooms were closed and without notice. And you wonder why Los Angeles stinks and like feces, urine, and vomit. Furthermore, the Music Center Grand Park must enforce the rule of law and provide us with public safety by placing sheriff's deputies in front of them, both male and female bathrooms, in blocks number one and four, all day, every day. We want safety, privacy, freedom from theft and harassment. And ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, a rat was found outside of my tent this morning when I woke up by the New Bridge Housing Gangbangers. Look at them. Look at them. Look at them. Look at them. I'm getting paid for fucking things, I'm getting paid for the wetbacks. Yes, okay? So I want you to know that. I know, I will, sir, you get me? But this is the shit I go through every day. Thank you, Eric Garcetti. Thank you, Mike Muir. Thank you. This is the shit I go through. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. With all due respect, yes.
Sergeants, that's a health hazard. Please, let's get that out of here.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Please, let's get that out of the chambers, away from the public, and disposed of properly.
All right, all right. That's not contaminated.
Next public comment card is Frederick Sillick. Okay, not seeing Frederick Sillick. Next speaker is Wayne Williams.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Wayne Williams, a board member of the California Clean Money Campaign. The latest election shows that we need to strengthen matching funds more than ever to empower the ability of small donors to get their voices heard over the flood of big money in politics. We're grateful council has moved the Ethics Commission proposal to increase the matching fund rate of six to one. Thank you, Councilmember Rue and Buscagno, for their amendment to lower the match to $115 to benefit small donors. Thank you, Council President Wesson, for moving the package forward. It's also critical to make sure the changes don't inadvertently make it harder for candidates to qualify, which the October 5th draft unfortunately would. That's why it is critical to pass Councilmember Bonin's amendment to adjust the aggregate threshold so it only takes as many maximum qualifying contributions as current law. We're very happy to hear that council leadership has assured us that Councilmember Bonin's motion will receive a vote in the Rules Committee by the end of January.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Stewart, Coalition to Preserve L.A. I want to talk about the $25,000 threshold that people still need to raise in Los Angeles in order to get those public matching funds. Only the very rich and incumbents can actually pull this off. I know this because I've done quite a bit of fundraising in the last year or two. We're asking that you lower it dramatically so that everyday people can actually hit that threshold and get that public financing. Because why is the public financing basically only providing public financing to incumbents and well-to-do people? It doesn't make any sense. It's the opposite of why we all brought in public financing in the first place. It's the opposite of why we all brought in public financing in the first place. Um, I will say that some of the incumbents in Los Angeles would not currently be able to make it under the current rules. That's how bad the current rules are. We're asking you to lower the threshold to $11,500. New York City's threshold is $5,000. If you're feeling pretty frisky about this, lower it to 5,000 so we're more like New York, which is a rational system. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Marlene Carberry, followed by Brandon. Is Brandon here, too?
Yes.
Yes. Brandon Atkins, come on up also, and Tony Cervantes, and Chris Atkins, Andre Moore, if you guys wanna start coming up. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name's Milen Carberry. I'm with Unrig L.A., and I wanna thank you for hearing us. Um, I also wanna do a special thank you to the councilmembers Rue, Coretts, and Bonin, and the Ethics and Rules Commission for bringing forth such a strong campaign finance movement. The last thing that we're asking for is to really please consider the amending motion of Councilmember Bonin's to drop the threshold from 25,000 to 11,500. If we don't do that, I mean, it's obvious, everyone else has spoken about it, but we've actually made it twice as hard for candidates to run, new candidates. But dropping the threshold will complete the entire tapestry of having an extraordinary campaign finance reform that really allows for new people to have a say in legislation. Thank you so much.
Okay, my name is Tony Cervantes. I'm an employee at NFI California Carriage Company. I've been there for 29 years. What has been said and heard and told about us is, is not true. Never for the 29 years that I have been employed there that I have sensed any dis- treatment, discriminated, or in any way. I'm not just only here speaking for the least at 2401 East Pacificos Highway. I am here for the last time that we were here, the way we were treated by Joe Buscagno, putting the 245 on us, not letting us speak. What kind of democracy is this? That, who runs the, the city? Does, uh, the people or Joe and his Teamsters? We had an election with them, and they lost two to one unanimously. We challenged them for a rematch, and they declined. We never heard anything from them. And I know that, Joe, you're in their pockets, like I got my iPhone in my pocket. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Chris Atkins. I've been at Cal Carriage for about eight years. And, uh, it's a lot of false actual accusations going on, a lot of lies, you know? We welcome you guys to come visit. Uh, last time we came here, we were booted out. We didn't get, we didn't even get a chance to speak. Um, and we just want our voices heard. You know, we have a group called the Teamsters, and they're lying about our company. They're saying we're mistreated.
Excuse me for one second. Hold this time. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting by standing up and flaring around in the pew. So if you wanna stand in the back and do that, that's fine. But if you do that again, then you're gonna be dismissed. Thank you. I'm sorry about your interruption, sir.
No problem. Well, there's lies going around saying we're mistreated, that our company is not safe, and, uh, those are all false. Uh, we are one big family together, and we all stand here united. And we would just like for y'all to hear us out and not just go on he say, she say. You know, these are the people here. So if you guys could just take the time and listen, and we thank you for hearing us out today. Thank you.
Dear Councilman Buscagno, I live in your district. I work in your district. As my councilman, you speak for me, but how can you when you won't even listen? See, I pay close attention to you not paying close attention. Then I question, do you really represent your constituents or just take special interests in helping the special interests? Quick question, are you even interested? Is what I'm saying even interesting? Do you wanna straighten us out with facts or continue to hear the Teamsters' lies and even help them twist them? Fact, we had a chance to unionize, but we voted two to one against it. Fact, the last, during the last strike, there were less than 25 Cal Carriage employees who participated, less than a massive work stoppage that you had previously mentioned. Fact, whenever offered the opportunity to vote again, the Teamsters just pretend like no one even mentioned it. Fact, well, not really, just something that I witnessed. I witnessed you tried to silence us, but not me because I'm different. I won't sit back and be indifferent. I won't sit back and be pessimistic. I'm here to make sure that my brothers and sisters remain optimistic. I'm on a mission to make sure that you never forget it. Thank you.
Sorry, the last, the last speaker, can I get your name, sir?
Brandon Atkins.
Yeah, the last one, yeah.
Andre Moore.
Thank you very much.
How you guys doing, council? My name is Brandon Atkins. I'm a forklift driver at, uh, California Carriage NFI. Um, I'd like to say, you know, it is a, a wonderful establishment. Um, I started working there in, uh, 2012, uh, working for eight bucks an hour, eight dollars an hour, you know? NFI stepped in, things started changing. Got new bathrooms, our pay rates went up. It's, we're not getting treated wrong at all. I mean, everyone that's there, it's not too many of us here that, that can speak on this situation, but we love where we are. If we didn't love where we are, why would we be there? Why would we wanna be at a job that we're not getting benefits that we need? We're not getting the pay rate that we need. Why would we be there? Why would we wanna come to work every day? And we have, we're being harassed by these guys in the morning, in the afternoons. I had a guy come to my house unannounced, trying to talk to me about a union that I didn't even ask you about. I wasn't even concerned about it, because all I wanna do is just come to work, get my money, go home. That's it. I got a family, I got bills, I got everything else. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Carrie Kaiser, Jaclyn Richardson, Rob Kwan. Elena.
I'm Carrie Kaiser. I live in CD4, and I strongly support C.M. Bonin's motion to the city's matching funds program of lowering the qualifying threshold for city council. A letter was sent to all, uh, city council members, uh, in support of this. It was, uh, signed on by many organizations. I'll read off a few. Alliance for Community Transit Los Angeles, American Indian Movement Southern California, Asian Americans Advancing Justice L.A., Bernie Sanders Brigade Bike the Vote, California Clean Money Campaign, California Common Cause, California River Watch, Citizens Take Action, Coalition to Preserve L.A., Community Health Councils, Dream Team L.A., and many more. And in the letter, it said in part, "We remain very supportive of the reforms passed by the Rules Committee. However, it is absolutely crucial that city council adopt Councilmember Bonin's amending motion so we don't make it significantly harder for serious candidates to qualify for the matching funds program." Thank you.
The Russian watchmen do not, uh, report what they know to the Los Angeles Police Department. They report what they know to the Russian government. They also watch the police department and listen to what they say with listening devices so they can report that to the Russian government, who in turn tells them what to do. Like, one person told me, the Russian government tells the Russian people when and where to move. Uh, some people who are disgusted or unsatisfied with the Russian government tell me different things if I'm not nasty or hostile. And if I don't report what they look like or where they were located when they told me, they tell me little things that I can report to you so you'll know what to do. Uh, they, they have told me many little things that I have reported over to you. They're not verifiable, but I can tell you, and you can get it verified in another direction.
It's your last warning. Rob Kwan, Elena.
Hi. Hi, thank you so much. Um, I am also here to support the Bonin amendment to lower the qualifying, uh, threshold for city council to 11,500. We really, I mean, even having the matching fund at 115, it will be impossible for candidates that are not well-known, women in particular, minorities, to actually make a run for, uh, city office unless we, uh, lower that qualifying matching fund. And we have, uh, the coalition letter, um, my colleague read some of those supporting it, and others include LA Forward, LA Voice, LA Walks, Leadership for Urban Renewal, League of Women Voters of Los Angeles, Legit Action Map Light, March and Rally for Los Angeles, Me Too March International, Money Out Voters In, National Council of Jewish Women Los Angeles, National Lawyers Guild Los Angeles, National Political Caucus L.A. Metro, National Political Women's Caucus L.A.
All right, thank you very much. And sergeants, go ahead and escort Herman out. Herman, you're escorted out of the meeting. Thank you very much. We're gonna take a, uh, pause while you're disrupting this meeting. Sergeants, please, go ahead. Herman, get up and leave. You're continuing, now you're yelling out again. Thank you very much. Thank you. No, we're done. Yes, go. Go ahead. Stop yelling out, Herman. You're continuing to disrupt this meeting. Continuing to disrupt this meeting.
Mr. President, for the record, you've given Herman at least four warnings during this meeting.
Still yelling out. Come on. Thank you very much. Several warnings. Thank you. Goodbye. You and your little dog, too.
Total asshole. Total asshole. Total asshole. Total asshole. Total asshole. Total asshole. Total asshole.
That's a weird name for a dog, but yeah, thank you very much. All right, Rob Kwan, followed, sorry about that, uh, followed by Antonetta?
Uh, thank you. Didn't bring any props today. Um, like to thank Councilmember Blumenfield for meeting with us earlier this week to talk about matching funds program. Uh, we highlighted that Nancy Pelosi, just last week, was talking about matching funds at a federal level. And, uh, when Congress one day looks at this issue, they're gonna be looking at Los Angeles. We've got the largest municipal districts and the largest state districts, uh, largest legislative districts of any state with a matching funds program. Um, are we gonna set the right example or an example of an inaccessible system? Just looking at the finances for our matching funds program, I think it's important to remember that we're gonna have close to 20 million in the fund on the eve of the 2020 election, and Ethics Commission forecasts that we'll have more than enough money, over 6 million remaining after going through four cycles and exiting 2026. The last thing I'd like to say is, the Commission on Status of Women produced a report on the, uh, underrepresentation of women in politics in L.A. I think this council should do something with that. The city of New York did something similarly and actually produced recommendations. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sweat Lodge, thank you for Mother Earth. Ancestors of air and water, listen to our plea. Ancestors of earth and fire, witness this wound. Pacha Mama, tanka shila, tanka hea, shewo kielo. We dig out our hearts, looking for the stone of ancestors' hands in our chest. Find ourselves ageless and burning fast in the long roads of their fingers. We enter the gatehouse, and as we sweat, the earthy melts in our veins. Naked from prime, from pride, we roam under volcanic rocks, looking for the sign in the flames of earthy womb. Touch ancient fever with the eyes of our forehead. Ancestors inside the rocks, let your light in torrents of song stir us into this lodge of capitalist usury. Blink in the sky, the constellation phoenix, as these words heal our lament into outrage. In flame, our...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Your time is up. The next speaker, please. Our final speaker.
Thank you.
Danielle? Come on up. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm French, 61 years old. I come from France, from Paris. Do you know Paris? I'm a student, graduate student, excuse me for my English, in, in economics. Graduate student in, uh, Atropos University, after 40 years as executive in big banks in Europe. I like your debate. It's free. Do you know that in France, in Europe, it's not permitted to discuss, like you, in the old continent? It banned it. Right knights, farbe. And like your country, I like Los Angeles. In France, we have a motto, liberté, égalité, fraternité. Freedom, equality, brother.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. So that concludes, uh, general public comment for this meeting. So we'll go ahead and close general public comment, and, um, we'll recess the current general meeting so we can open up the special, and if we can take the roll on the special meeting, please.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Herrstossen, Weiser, Coretts, Cricorian, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present, Mr. President.
Okay, and, uh, on this item, the public comment has already been held, so we're gonna go ahead and move to receive and file this item. We can go ahead and open the roll on the receive and file, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. That concludes the special. We can adjourn the special and reconvene the regular scheduled meeting. And the next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Votions are posted and referred. Council members, do we have any announcements? I'm looking around. I see none. Do we have adjourning motions? Looking to my right, seeing none. Looking to my left, seeing none.
just a concept or an idea that's placed on a piece of paper or, or even an image that
That concludes this council meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Be safe.
you see on a, on a screen. American Furniture Manufacturer supplies furniture for a lot of big-name hotels in the Los Angeles market and all throughout California. We focus mainly on commercial clients, and to make it commercial, you, uh, it needs to be very, very durable, very high-quality. My father, Harry, started this company in 2004. I personally joined the company in 2008. As vice president, my day-to-day tasks include everything that you need to do to run a business, reviewing design, scheduling, and coordinating logistics, as well as accounting and, uh, anything else you can think of. Most of the things that I learned, um, and our success now has been through experience and on-the-job experience. I would say what makes AFM Contract unique is the fact that we're very punctual, very transparent, and cost conscientious to the client. American Furniture Manufacturer would have 65 employees, uh, in California altogether. Internationally, Indonesia and China, where we also have factories, um, goals combined can range up to the thousands. We mainly ship through the port of L.A. Per month, approximately, we import about 30 to 40 containers. We were drawn to Pomona, California, because the property in this area was quite large and financially obtainable. My wife and I enjoy cooking in our spare time. When you're cooking, you can only focus on cooking. You get some sort of like meditation or peace through that. I would say there's nothing I dislike about my job. As challenging or as tough as the day would get, whenever you go through these challenges, you can only grow and learn from it. I find great gratification in working for a family business. At the end of the day, uh, any success or any growth that you have is towards the growth and success for your family, which is also in turn helping out the community and creating job opportunities for new employees. That's where I get gratification.
... extensive photograph collection of about 60,000 photos that were given to us by the Security Pacific Bank and the Herald Examiner.
That's amazing. These are pictures of almost everything in Los Angeles. You can find a picture.
Sure, so if you need a picture of the Hollywood sign, all you need to do is type it in, and up will come the shot, and you can even blow it up, print it out. You can even ask a librarian a question from our website.
So right now, it's not even like an email that I have to wait for them to email me back tomorrow. I could actually, through a live chat, ask a research question and talk directly to a librarian.
That's right.
So what's this e-media all about?
I should have you talk to Giovanna Manino about that. She's our local expert.
Can we go talk to her?
Sure, let's see if she's in our office now.
So Giovanna's...
My wife and I enjoy cooking in our spare time. When you're cooking, you can only focus on cooking. You get some sort of meditation or peace through that. I would say there's nothing I dislike about my job. As challenging or as tough as the day would get, whenever you go through these challenges, you can only grow and learn from it. I find great gratification in working for a family business. At the end of the day, any success or any growth that you have is towards the growth and success for your family, which is also in turn helping out the community and creating job opportunities for new employees. That's where I get gratification.
... extensive photograph collection of about 60,000 photos that were given to us by the security Pacific Bank and the Herald Examiner.
That's amazing. These are pictures of almost everything in Los Angeles.
Sure. So if you need a picture of the Hollywood sign, all you need to do is type it in, and up will come the shot, and you can even blow it up, print it out. You can even ask a librarian a question from our website.
So right now, it's not even like an email that I have to wait for them to email me back tomorrow. I could actually, through a live chat, ask a research question and talk directly to a librarian.
That's right.
So what's this e-media all about?
I should have you talk to Giovanna Manino about that. She's our local expert.
Can we go talk to her?
Sure. Let's see if she's in our office now.
So Giovanna, Steve tells me that you know everything there is to know about the Los Angeles Public Library's e-media collection.
Well, I'll tell you what I do know. This is probably the most exciting service that we've offered during the past year. Now, 24/7, anywhere, anytime, with a library card, you can download audiobooks, videos, and classical music.
How do you do that?
Well, all you need to do is go to our library website, www.lapl.org, click on e-media, and it'll take you to the e-media site, and you have your selection of audiobooks, music, and videos to download.
So if you want to listen to books in the car on the way to and from work, how much does it cost per book?
The service is completely free, and you can check up to 10 at a time, and you can borrow them for three weeks.